All right, thank you. Welcome, everyone. This is a regular meeting of the Fairhaven Planning Board. I would notice that this meeting has been given pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. At the time of the board reorganization in January of this year, the board adopted its regular meeting schedule for the year. Notice of the schedule was sent to and published in the Asbury Park Press on February 2nd, 2022, and the Two River Times on February 3rd, 2022. That notice was also posted on the Bulletin Board in Borough Hall and has remained continuously posted there as required by the statute. A copy of the notice is and has been available to the public and is on file in the office of the Borough Court. A copy of the notice has also been sent to such members of the public as have requested such information in accordance with the statute. I would notice having been given, the board secretary is directed to include this statement in the minutes of the meeting. And so, Sandra, can we take a roll call?
Mr. Boyerlin.
Here.
Mr. Bush.
Here.
Mr. Spatch.
Here.
Mr. Noel.
Here.
Mr. Loyola.
Here.
Mr. Roll.
Here.
Mr. Nika. Mr. Olson.
Here.
Mrs. D'Angelo.
Here.
Mr. Burkhart. And Mr. Leader.
It goes here. I'd amuse you. Sorry, I'm here.
Okay, let's say, let's say, pleasure, Regent. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, united as one with liberty and justice for all. So, so we'll first start with the schedule of all business, which, which there is none. And so, we'll move on to the consideration of the proposed ordinance 2022-15 restaurant ordinance. Now, I want to refresh the, the board's understanding of the events that had led us to this point. As you all know, the, as an outcome of the Dunkin' Donuts hearing in, in 2019, and all of the, the different opinions, facts, and circumstances that were presented as part of that debate, the, the council undertook a, the council formed a committee to look at the restaurant ordinance and, and come up with changes and amend that ordinance so that we could have a, a, a more, a, a more representative ordinance for what the circumstances are in our town. And so, the, the, the committee spent about a year meeting, interviewing people in the town. I am gaining an understanding of what the, of what the townspeople wanted in, in this ordinance. And also met with, with the planners and, and others to come up with a draft ordinance. Now, they had to suspend at a meeting because of COVID. They came back. There were multiple meetings at, at council meetings and, and other public hearings on the ordinance to review the ordinance and give the public an opportunity to comment on the ordinance. And so, now we've been asked, as a planning board, to review the, the, the ordinance as it stands today to ensure that it's, it's consistent with our, with our master plan. And so, I'd ask any of the planning board members to, to comment or add to that, to that commentary as, as needed.
If, if I could jump in right away, it's Mike Nika, obviously, from the Zoom sphere. The one other thing I'd add to that complete narrative is that the, the restaurant committee, of which I was a member, also did what I characterize as an exhaustive survey of the town. We had over 800 responses. The responses were relatively consistent and were reflected largely in the, or reflected as much as possible under the constraints of the, you know, of, of making a ordinance that could, that was, that was relevant and, you know, was lasting. But the, the town weighed in heavily on this beyond just, you know, conversation. It was, the, the survey was extensive. And I think that's a very important part of the, important part of the narrative.
I, I agree. So, the, the ordinance has been, and the contents of the ordinance has been, has been vetted through, through a survey. The surveys inform the contents of the ordinance, and there's been ample, I think, public hearing on, on shaping this ordinance. So, it comes to us as a planning board, having, having been through that, that very complete process. And so, I, I think.
I did want to address one other point. Initially, I think we also engaged our, then, at that point in time, Hiren Rule, to make some recommendations to us. And I think what we did was we tasked them with two, two specific tasks. Number one was to eliminate the ambiguities that we found could be read into the current code definitions. And the second was to look into service standards for limiting or restricting fast food restaurants, but more with an eye towards being tailored made to Fairhaven, where our commercial district is close and has a significant nexus to our residential areas. Which took out a realm of certain things where, you know, you might designate a fast food up on a highway, those kinds of things. We don't have that type of facility. We did get a report back, and I'm referencing for perfect record, a report on May 28th, 2019, in which Hiren Rule definitely addressed the first issue of the ambiguity. And it was at that point in time that those definitions came back to the planning board. We did review those, and after our review, again, we found, as we would, in our role, we found that certainly the definitions were consistent with our master plan and its own ordinances. But to the extent that Hiren Rule really hadn't grappled with the issue of, you know, limitations of fast food, we urged Mayor and Council in our writing of, I think we reviewed on July 16th of 2019. And then we prepared, well, I prepared at new direction a letter to Mayor and Council, July 26th, 2019, essentially urging them not to act on the ordinance until the second issue could be sort of wrestled to the ground in a way that was reflective of what was supposed to be in the period. And then I would dovetail the chair's comments with, and how that came back in the fairly extensive and exhaustive purpose. And I would also say that, I would say several things informed us with regard to, at least my review of the, of the court and the work of the restaurant committee. Number one, the proceedings at the Dunkin' Donuts hearing certainly informed us. Certainly, people came out and said, you know, this is not reflective of what we would like to see. I think it was initially an issue with the application that they perceived themselves as an exempt development. You shouldn't even have to go before. We had several court challenges with regard to that. That certainly informed the work of this planning board. I think the second thing that informed the work of the planning board, and I'm not saying it was a fortuitous circumstance, but it certainly did make us relook at how we define fast food is that during this process, if you will, suddenly we're going through a pandemic. Suddenly, what was, what was fast food, if you will, sort of took on a nuanced meaning where you might, you know, your standard restaurant usually serves you interior, with its, yeah, your traditional restaurant experience. Now you're calling in and giving them something over the phone, driving up, and maybe just hitting the back gate, and they were dropping in. That really wasn't, I don't think anybody prior to that circumstance had said that, that's never gonna happen. That's not true. But, but by definitions, we just simply said, formula of not stop in, and the equivalent of the drive-in window. You realize that that didn't really necessarily fit the experience. We wanted to have the experience, as I say, fit the uniqueness of Fairhaven's experience with our commercial area so close to our left one. And doing more of what I would characterize as a formula approach, rather than saying anything that has a drive-up window, or where you just come pick things up. So, we have more of a formula approach. And indeed, that's what we're going to see is reflecting the ordinance definitions of sort of standard menus, those types of things. But I think then informed this board as to where they wanted to go. That information is also made available, obviously, to Mayor and Council. Mayor and Council took that ordinance and came back with, she took that information and came back with the ordinance now that you see before us, which redefines, in the sense, goes forward and a little bit further than Hiren Rule did with the ambiguity. And then sort of took up the, the second task and defined what we thought fit within Fairhaven in terms of what we wanted to see and what we didn't see by way of restaurants and fast food restaurants. And I think that's what should have been pointed to at this point. I would also echo the remarks of the chair that our role is, is fairly circumscribed. You know, we, we don't write the ordinance. We may have helped form background information rulings. We don't vote on the ordinance. Our role is basically to take a look at and say, is this consistent with the developed regulations and master plan? I think, as I originally said in a writing some time ago, to suggest the definition of reference didn't be consistent. It's a little bit beyond my reading to comprehend. So, I think you're going to find that. And then the second task is to, if, if for some reason we did find something consistency, we would inform Mayor and Council back. And that still wouldn't change ever and ever and ever since it's got passed. It would simply change the voting department from Mayor and Council. So, having said that, I'm going to sit back and be quiet.
I got one question. Was this, um, this new draft ordinance that we came up with after, you know, 2019 current form? Was that given back to the planner to see if it jogs with our mission plan, our current planner?
We are. And it went back to Hiren Rule, even though we have a different planner now.
Yeah.
Because Hiren Rule worked with us on the initial presentation, as well as their affordable housing planners. They did go through it.
So, they signed off on this? Usually we see like letters from them when they're here, but I don't see it there, so.
Unfortunately, this evening, our end of year, which credit is down with COVID also. So, so if you couldn't be present this evening, but I am informed that, yes, they did not find anything that was seen consistently in the master plan.
I'd just like to bring up one thing that shows what I think is a consistency with the master plan. The drive-through window. So, notice it says that you can, as long, you can have a drive-through window as long as it's not access with a car. Because I think that fits up, picks up quite a lot of the idea of a walking town. Because the master plan talks about how we like a pedestrian-friendly town. This allows, for instance, a, a, a little window up on the sidewalk. I'm just looking at Red Bank, the new place that are opening up right in the corner of Front Street. They've installed like a little window that's on the sidewalk. So, you can go in and I'm assuming get a quick cappuccino or a little sandwich or something there. And to me, that contributes to the neighborhood because it invites people to go walking to the, to the restaurant and pick up something from a window. So, a small detail like that, and the key there is without exiting their vehicle. So, you have to exit the vehicle or act back to them. So, I thought that was quite well practiced.
Hi. Can you hear me? I have a, I have a question and a, and a comment. So, does this affect the Dunkin' Donuts as it exists? Does this, I guess the real question is, does this force them to close for some reason, or are they still compliant?
Let me, I, no, no. This, this has go-forward effect, if you will. Anything that exists in the municipality at this point in time that might not have met this definition is for all intents and purposes grandfathered. That's not going to change. No one is going to be shut down. That's not how these ordinances work. We have prospective effect. It doesn't go electroactively. Now, certainly, if you had some type of use that clearly fit the definition of a prohibited use now, because you have the, in addition to the permitted, in addition to the definition, we now have categories of materials that are prohibited. It's fast food restaurants, drive-in restaurants, drive-through windows as defined by. If someone had that type of facility right now and wanted to expand, they would have a heightened requirement. They would need to come in for a variance because they're expanding a non-conforming use at that point in time. But it does not stop any existing use at present. And in a sense, grandfathered those reasons that may have originally not formed within this ordinance.
Okay, thank you. And my, my comment, so as I, as I read through the, all the, you know, three or four pages of whereas, as you can see, you know, starting in 1972, the, the town trying to sort of keep up with, with, you know, people are, the restaurant world was using various loopholes to try to, try to get around some of the rules, and then the town would, would pass a law and try to redefine things. I think the, the edits as I read them look great. I mean, I think they're a step in the right direction, but with, with that sort of cat and mouse game in mind, that restaurant world is changing. Mr. Kovat suggests on, I mean, DoorDash is happening. I lived in a city before Fairhaven where they were testing drone delivery of food. I don't know if people have heard of Ghost Kitchen. So, for example, you could order off the Applebee's menu regardless of if there's an Applebee's near you. So, something like a Lupo could pick that business up and deliver their menu. So, there's a, a lot going on there. I think this is, is good work. But you can see the, the cat and mouse game. And are, are we against, I shouldn't say against, are we trying to limit, you know, fast food or, you know, the traffic, the traffic issue goes away if you move to drones, for example? Lighting and, and the hours, you know, the, the, the 1:00 AM drive-through, I think that would still fit. But the, the traffic rationale, I think, will fade pretty quickly. So, just sort of some comments.
Is that, is that Brian?
Yes.
Hey, Brian, it's Mike. Having sat in the inside, the town, the, the, the view of the survey is probably the most sort of democratic, you know, voice of, of what people wanted was almost unequivocal in its desire to eliminate fast food. So, that ordinance is a reaction that did really two things. One, it attempted to, and that was, you know, it attempted to append that voice to opinions already reflected in the master plan. It also, secondly, attempted to do it in a way that was going to stand the test of challenges to it. So, the cat, to your cat and mouse point. And then finally, it also, in our, in our committee, there was really a balanced voice. I mean, there was, there was, you know, you know, four opinions, really, you know, four different points to the compass. And I would argue that there was theories tested as to, you know, the, you know, as to the change in restaurant types due, due to the pandemic, the shifting types of restaurants just generally. And also, most importantly, the existing restaurants in town. So, thinking about Busker Do, having, you know, being, you know, somewhat of a formula business, or Lupo having multiple, you know, multiple outlets. Do was balanced. What was a pretty vociferous, you know, opinion towards the elimination of fast food against all those factors? And the, the, the alternative to it to, you know, to either leave the language, as if the language is left unchanged, it effectively leaves the door open for fast food to come into town, which we know as, you know, expressed by the opinion of the survey and around the Dunkin', you know, sort of the Dunkin' dialogue. We know that's not what the town wants. So, I would argue that that ordinance, that ordinance is the product of hours and hours and hours of debate and sort of, you know, Socratic examination. So, you know, there's no such thing as the best we can do. We can always do a little bit better. But that ordinance is a really, really hard-fought, one balance that was informed by opinions both for and against, but really, truly in reflection of the opinion of town as, you know, mandated by the processes as we set forth to the, the restaurant committee.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very much in favor of not having fast food as well. And I guess I, I would, I would approve this. I think it's great. It's a good step forward, but we can't rest on our laurels if that's the goal, because there's going to be, there's going to be new technology that makes a loophole, I guess was my point, which is what, what you're, what you're saying happened in the committee. And there's a way I can help. Let me know. Because I, this is a never-ending game, I think.
Oh, and, and we, we really tried. We went through a lot of different, you know, again, it was really important to us to protect the restaurants that are, you know, both in town and what people seem to want, right? So, we, we went a little bit further than just listening to the letter of the survey and tried to think ahead. And also tried to do that in terms of the code and appreciate what, what could be challenged. But also, you know, there was a lot of dialogue about making it easy for, you know, new restaurants to approach the town. Like we, what we didn't want to do was either become, you know, absolutist or, you know, you know, you know, leave, you know, close the door on, you know, what the sort of the broad spectrum of the town wanted. But this, you know, I appreciate what you're saying. And yes, that's, you know, we totally agree with you. Or I do. I won't speak for the whole committee, but I do. And I appreciate that.
So, I have a question. So, is it eliminating fast food or is it chains? Because I'm trying to figure out, like, if the Jersey Mike's wanted to come into town tomorrow, it's similar to Fairland's. So,
I, I think we would have to take a look at it on a case-by-case basis at that point in time. What, what I would say in this instance, you, you literally go line by line through how fast food. It doesn't necessarily say chain, but it does say franchise. I noticed the comment was traffic. You notice it doesn't mention traffic.
Yeah, I did know that.
It tries to, I mean, and, and I would say that in the past from different ordinances that I've seen, you have, you have to take the balance. Number one, you want to have something that's going to withstand judicial scrutiny. You simply can't say fast food, you know, are not allowed. You're going to have to kind of define what you're talking about so that there is some, some standards. There's going to be some subjectivity with regard to that. Now, I wouldn't want to be on record as to saying whether Jersey Mike's would or wouldn't at this point in time. But I think you would go through, you know, is it a, is it a fixed menu? Is it like a franchise? And I'm looking at these things. You know, is it graphic service, graphic turnover, those types of things? Because you can have something that's simply, you know, it doesn't have to have tables. So, this would be something as the ordinance says. So, I, I, I don't think you're trying to eliminate one or the other, but what you're trying to say is, and again, this is, this is after reading the report and looking at the surveys, going back to the report, looking at the surveys. And it's kind of like, what will fit in Fairhaven? I mean, fast food, I think, is almost a handhold to, to try to have people say, okay, I, I know at the extreme what that is. Large pay, pay area, large impervious services, parking areas. You know, a quick win, a drive-through, a pickup window, a waiting station, you know, a parking menu. We all understand what that is. Now, when do you go from that to some of the things that, you know, like a bus career is, okay, well, but that, we don't see, that doesn't seem to trouble folks with regard to the service. And there were, I mean, I said, you looked through the service of the different types of restaurants that we looked at. And it was like, do you favor this for Fairhaven? Don't favor this for Fairhaven. It's a roundabout way of saying, I, I don't think it's, it's so much an elimination of something as to what we think fits within. And trying to balance that with the case law and trying to say, you know, if we do, if there is a challenge, and I'm not saying there's one coming out of the court, but if there is a challenge, be able to have an appropriate record showed to the court. No, this wasn't just against something. This was something that we looked at and found that fit with our municipality because of the uniqueness of our commercial area to our residential.
So, Doug, following up on that, you mentioned judicial scrutiny and case law. I assume that we have gotten the language for these definitions. Our, our attorneys have gotten them from somewhere. And has the language been tested? Is it?
My understanding, I, I was not part of the process. I can't, I can't speak directly to that.
Part of what we did was we looked at similar towns that had similar populations, similar demographics. And we looked at their zoning, and we looked at the language that they used when it came to talking about these types of restaurants. And in some cases, the language or the intent was challenged in court, and it passed. So, we have a record that we could refer to, and, and I'm not a lawyer, so I'm not really aware of what all the legal terms are. But we did our homework. And we, we looked at language that had been tested or challenged in court.
The Hiren Gruel memo does say that they took the definitions of drive-in and drive-through from, quote, "the complete illustrated book of development definitions." So, that, that, at least those two things are, are from a, an established source, I guess, or an expert in the area.
Yeah, I take it, I take it Mike Irene is not sitting in the room, right? Because Mike did, I think, yeah, he did extensive research on the, you know, against the different cases that we, we looked at and used as comparables. So, without speaking for him, I would, I, you know, I believe that this was looked at against in each, in each component of the definitions, just looked against, looked at against, you know, relevant, all, you know, relevant comparable cases and what was, you know, what withstood the judicial test and what, what's it done.
So, with, with drive-through window, you can have a walk, like, kind of like Dave said, you could have a walk-up window for an ice cream shop or a coffee shop, coffee shop or like Boondocks down, down on the water, that would be permitted? Within these definitions, the way I read it?
You couldn't drive up to it.
Right, right. And I would say yes.
And it's hard to make those kinds of conclusions. We have, sort of.
And that, my, my other thing is just by reading through all these things, old definition, new definition, whatever, like, like a ice cream shop, Nicholas. I mean, that is a ready-made, regular menu, quickly serviced, because some of the conditions are off. It almost falls into the fast food category. And I'm sure that wasn't the intent, that an ice cream shop not be allowed down, but I mean, do you guys see that differently, where that would fall into restaurant and not fast food? Just reading these new definitions.
Again, I think in terms of what our role is here.
Right.
Okay. And rather than try to be placed on the record as to what the attorney thinks is or isn't in there with regard to those definitions, certainly it's not going to affect any current ice cream parlor.
Right.
So, the crackpot, you're better than anyone.
Yep.
In terms of something new coming in, in the first instance, it's going to go to our zone officer, who will make the determination as to whether it's a prohibited use. And that's just, just as Dunkin' Donuts did at that point in time. And even that, it's still a town, but it withstood that challenge. I think I'm trying to tap into it, although that I am. Because I, I, I don't want to give an opinion prospectively on a case that isn't before us at this point in time, and certainly not within our jurisdiction. Ours is, does this fit within zoning ordinances, master plan? And trying to pigeonhole whether something is or isn't going to fit is going to be, it's going to come to us after that initial termination with a rationale as to why at that point in time. If the person which is to challenge that, that rationale, if you will, it's not going to come to the planning board in the first instance. That doesn't mean you shouldn't spend yourself. It's going to go to the zoning board of adjustment or interpretation as to whether or not, going back to specifically your question, whether that was the intent of the ordinance.
Okay. That's, well, we got our record, our mind.
Your own record.
On what I think is the.
Well, it seems, it seems to me like all of this can, you know, as you use the term to be challenged and for the zoning board planning, what have you, like, down, down the road, this is going to be, we're setting a framework here that is not exactly etched in stone on a case-by-case basis. Like, it gives us a guideline and a, and a, and a kind of a frame. Guideline and a, and a, and a kind of a framework to start talking about. Any application before us, but. On a case by, if I understand it, on a case by case, a business or proposed business. Um, can refuse some of the, some of the language and say, well, we do believe that we should be allowed based on characteristics or our own, right? So that's, this is not like. Broad strokes eliminating.
Yeah, you have to look at the complete mosaic of the case in front of you, right? And so. It's easy to say and need to go, well, if it has this, this and this, well, that's just three or four points, right? You have to. You actually, actually have a case in front of you to really determine if something is or isn't.
And, and, and I don't want you to think that, that you're going to resolve all the questions. You can't even anticipate where it is. And I will tell you, as I'm sure you all have experienced to one extent or another. Sometimes how legislation gets changed. It's because you lost it. Just so that I find that. It should, you know, this should have been here, this should have been there. You go back to the drawing board, you lost that one and then we change that consistently as what the court said. And we have a new piece of legislation and we wait for the next challenge. I know that's not wholly satisfactory, but in many instances. It's, how many times do you hear that the, you know. New Jersey legislature decided to do this because they found out there was a loophole that they wanted to solve. Fancy way of saying somebody, somebody won that case before and walked through the loophole that was not intended by the.
Um, well, I'll put on the survey, the town survey, we said eight hundred respondents, how many? Town residents, we have six thousand.
Uh, twenty one hundred households.
Um, and we, do we think that?
It was a really good response. A lot of households just responded to one person.
Okay. And we think that what is being proposed fits with what the survey results.
Yeah, and, and the council had a conversation last night. They recognized that it's a living document that. It's not, as we said, etched in stone. There might be unintended consequences that we're not aware of. But to us, it was a good start. And, and totally defensible.
Certainly address that unaddressed issue that the first go down. With what higher group was presented, they didn't, they didn't pretend that they were trying to wrestle. The, anything other than to clarify the ambiguity in the definitions. Um, this, this, I would say from my review, it tends to address those things. That we asked, that we asked mayor and council, realize that the restaurant committee is separate from us. That's, that's not us. We asked the mayor and council, before you go forward. Let's try to do this as a package. And from what I can see, this is a clear, direct. Response to power request to mayor and council to address that. Is it perfect? I, I don't think. I, I would doubt it because I don't want many things that we do in our human endeavors that are, but I think this at least. Is, you know, sometimes we wonder if, if, if government bodies are responsible for our concerns. Clearly this was responsible for our concerns. There's no doubt we want to do that.
And the concept of like a living document and we're, we're, we're crawling before we walk here as a, before, before we run. Good start.
Yes.
So I think from a, uh, from a planning board perspective. The next step Doug is, is are there any comments that need to be made? I think we're going to memorialize. What we talked about in a memo to the council. Um, concluding that we, we, we believe the ordinance, uh, conforms with the, it's in alignment with the master plan and then. As well as, as if there are any such standard comments that need to be made in, in the letter.
Yes, usually what we've done in the past is, you know, it's, it's. We, we identify when we review this. Um, and usually a preliminary conclusion as to whether or not it does meet with the judicial standard, which is, uh, NJSA. Forty fifty five D capital D dash twenty six. Um, and then what we have done in the past is if there were comments. Sort of associated with the ordinance, but not as to that ultimate task we said, we sort of said, by the way. It certainly is consistent with master plans on ordinances. Here's some things we also discussed that we thought might be interesting for mayor and council to, to look at. Because I often say, we're sort of the mayor and council's legislative committee. With regard to planning the zoning. And if we had the other concerns, as we have in the past, I think when we, when we took a look at the. Uh, I think a good example was when we took a look at the. Planning development of the. Um, I think the police station, in fact, one. By far and away, it was a development. It, it didn't technically, it wasn't technically the same thing we're doing here. But in addition, just reviewing the application, we, we provide the comments from. People in the audiences and what they like to see, sort of to inform their account or if nothing else. Here's some other things that you might not have seen and think you couldn't address. And this is the opportunity to do that. I collect those thoughts, hook it over the writing. Any other thoughts?
So this was discussed at council last night. Was there any public commentary?
I, I do not know. It has to go with the first reading. It was first reading last night or was that just a table discussion?
Uh, it was watching a discussion. Um, there, there was one resident who represented the business district. Uh, that had concerns, um, about preexisting businesses. Which is a legitimate concern and, uh, obviously everybody's brainpower is in, so.
I'm assuming it says that somewhere here in the bigger public, like just in a paragraph somewhere here.
It, it probably does not, and it does not need to, but as most legislatures perspective, it is the other, if it is intended to be done immediately. Or have retroactive, but that's where it has to sit.
It would be excluded.
Yeah.
Do we need to call a resolution or anything?
No, you just need, what we've usually done is, uh, if there are no other comments. Mr. Probet, prepare the letter. I make sure you get copies of that and see what I send out. In the second reading, you know?
I believe it's until the last.
So we have time. I'll certainly get the, get the letter out for you. Want to respond, please respond only to me, do not reply at all. Respond only to me if there's any concerns. And address those. I'm going to tell you that since there aren't really any additional comments, I'm going to say. It needs to be master plan. It's responsive. It appears to be a direct response from our writing earlier. I'm probably going to reference our writing of, of July and the higher level document initially. And now, it's a good start to get off. Because I just think we have something that we can go forward and work with. It's, it's not going to be a lengthy dissertation. It's going to be, um, agent, agent handle.
So do we need to, to, to rec you to do that and?
So say you all be opposed? Because we're not, we're not formally.
It's within thirty five days after referral, we're going to have this report in section ten.
Well, technically, it's, it's sort of sideways reputation. If, if we had done nothing. The way in the Western word instead, you know, after first reading, it comes to us. We then have thirty five days to get a report back to mayor and council on consistency. If we did nothing. After thirty five days, second reading, they go forward. If we have written something and we think there is an inconsistency. Mayor and council might decide to change the ordinance. If they decide not to change the ordinance despite the inconsistency. It just changes the vote requirement to.
And if we act sooner, they can move it more quickly.
Thirty five is the outside, we get it to them quicker.
Yeah, if we got it by October tenth, we can, we can.
Sure. Because they will still have to do a public hearing before they go, I can tell you, before they can do that, they have either had thirty five days passed or have heard.
So we, uh, I think we'll move on now to the administrative items. There's no other comments. And so first is the, uh, approval of the minutes from our July nineteenth, twenty twenty two meeting. And so those meetings, those, those minutes were distributed prior to the meeting for review. Um, I did not have any comments. I don't know if any of the other board members have any comments, so.
No comment.
Great. So I'll move to, uh, approve the minutes for July nineteen, twenty twenty two.
Mr. Borderline?
Yes.
Mrs. Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Fable though?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Do I do a piece along them? Mr. Nidka?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Angelo?
Yes.
Great. The next, uh, next item in, in the administrative items is, is to just revisit the, the concept of email addresses for board members. So, um, I, I think what we, what we'd like to do is, is make sure everybody responds. Uh, or sends an email to Sandy, um, noting what their official board member address will be. We, we've. Um, you don't have to use that, that Gmail convention that, that we came up with, but. We, we think it's best practice that we all use that, that Gmail convention. And so. Uh, we can, we can redistribute that. Um, but by the next meeting, let's make sure everybody's on record. As what their official, uh, email address will be for board business.
I'm trying to check this. Yes. Created it, but I'm in here today. I was like, I haven't heard much about this meeting.
After we get this email list, distribution list or whatever, we're only going to email that now. Because right now it's getting the email from Gmail and.
Sending it everywhere.
Yeah, that's right. Or, or your, your, whatever email you want to use. We prefer everybody to use the Gmail. But if, if, it will reply to Sandy with what you want your emails for board business to be.
Popping back to me initially, but now it seems to be.
Yeah, let's say I got, you sent it to me, I got your reply back.
I know, and then it didn't work. So then I added you back in. So if you've replied back to me, I've taken your. Um, original email off. But if I thought there were issues because of messages I was getting, I just left everything on and kept sending it because I wasn't afraid.
We're just trying to narrow it down to one. And, and, and I encourage you to do that, pervert, pervert, some very, very simplistic. Uh, procedure. We then know that there's an official address. There's something to go to. And if in, if in fact, we are asked. By way of an open public records request. Um, it allows us to say, you know, these are the documents. And maintain your privacy in case some, some owners will know. I want to see all of their emails. You can say, no. This is their official email address. This is what we reviewed. This is what we took a look at. And because now people, when they ask for an open public records request, they give you search terms. You know, um, say, I wanted to know if the planning board was talking about maybe the search terms Cobas, search term Doug. Uh, through certain ground, registered dates. Um, and then they will revise to review those documents if something is up with a hit. We send it out unless, unless it's protected, like some other provision.
Uh, so the, the third item on the administrative, uh, list is the pending resolution authorizing the award of contract of board engineer. There's no update on that right now. And so, uh, that, that, that item will carry forward until, uh, until the next meeting.
Is contract still being negotiated?
That's, I, yeah, I, there's just no update to give the planning board.
I, I will say, I will say from our point of view, you have responded to the requests that you would ask and you have expressed. Concerns of the board back when this process started. Um, we were invited into the process. Uh, I had looked at the whole material about, and I think the latest. Review, if you will, and I don't think I'm coming down, uh, uh, school, I think, they were going to have sort of a base contract. With an addendum to what we wanted to have. I had gotten that out to them as to what a proposal was. And as, as, as. As one says, it's under review. Um, our work, the work is getting done. The work is getting done. Um, and we're going forward.
Uh, so there's no public in attendance, so we'll skip, uh, public comment. I'll just open it up. Any, any other further comment by the board before we adjourn?
How's everybody feeling about in person versus?
Uh, I, I'm indifferent. I, I'd like the opportunity for people. That, um, you, you know, are away or traveling to still participate in, in the meeting, um. If they can, and, and even if we don't need a quorum, I mean, it, it saves time and effort to have to, you know, for that person to then have to. Listen to the tapes or, or, or other, if they, they have to opine on something that's going to be carried forward to another meeting, so. Um. Finding some way to, to. You know, in person first and then, and then some ability for folks to dial in, I think would be. The best.
Does that count as an attendance though?
So I think that's a policy we have to.
Wrestle that to the ground a little bit. Um, because there, there are things that you've made in the termination you might want to see. Um, I, I'm. Received some information this evening that when this is done elsewhere, even as long as you were set up, as we said in the memo. Where the Q and C, we heard, fully participate. Um, that you shouldn't use, like, you can't get down in the corn and, and, and vote. Um. I, I'd like to see us finalize that as our, as our rule. One way or the other, we have another discussion again. Um, I don't think we really sort of wrestled that to the ground the last time we discussed it. But sure.
I mean, like, um, the meetings of like today, it's perfectly fine. It works for everybody because nobody needs to see an exhibit.
Yeah, that's very. The bigger issue there is because there's a lot more, not the preparation is it, but I mean, if you're going to be doing things remotely, I should say. You can look onto those things, see those incentives, do that. I, I, I am low. And this is just my personal opinion. It's not even my legal opinion. You know, I, I, I think you want to. From my reading of some of the cases, we want to discourage a situation where you have six Zoom. And three present.
Right.
I mean, because I do think, you know, as we get back into public meetings, I agree with the comments of the chair. For some people, it's really the meetings, just maybe have a high grit effect because either. Maybe I can't get out this evening, but I'm interested in this and that creates something for some of our population. Don't want to be out at night. Or go around with reasons, don't, but really want to participate. I think that's a nice feature. But at the end of the day. Uh, I, I do think people like to make their comments to the board all at once and actually see your interactive. I mean, I, that's not to say that the Zoom interactive can happen. Um, but I, I do think there's something special about being able to come out to the meeting, make those comments. And, you know, see the different reaction from the board members and then the different reactions from the folks face to face. So much of communication happens significantly below your chair. You know, um, you know, when I see, when I see a presentation made and I see one of ours, like this. Like this. If that person plays poker at all, they probably just figured out they don't have their vote. Something just happened and changed it. You know, you might not see that in Zoom. You might not pick that out. So I, I, I'm sensitive to that. It's also my practice on the trial attorney. When I did definite, when I did depositions, uh, over Zoom medium. Or similar type medium, I never felt I got all, all of the information I could have been supplied with.
A lot of starter for sure.
So. But, but that, but this is your work. I'm not the, I'm not the appointed official. This is your work. You operate it as to what you think will work best for you.
My, my only excuse, I, I, consistent in this is that. Uh, I have found, uh, as chair of the shade committee, uh, we get better attendance when Zoom and remote attendance is. Is a possibility because of the childcare component.
There you go.
So many times. Some of my commissioners would not be able to attend a meeting in person because they could not get a sitter or did not want to get a sitter. Um, and so like, I, I love the idea of, yes, you know. A, a heavy imbalance toward in person, but the option, um, should you need it to be on record, be part of the form. So that's, I can't, I can't, in my experience, I can't see it working better. Right.
Sure.
I mean, how many times have you seen the public, the public access channel where though there's not an interaction from the person at home, so to speak. If they're missing call in meetings, certainly I guess they could, but they, you're seeing the government body not to.
I agree with you, the nonverbal communication bit, but you know.
I think most of, most of the policies that I see is that there has to be a physical corner. You know, physically present in the same room at the same time. The other issue that you have to have some nuance. Um, you know, what happens if you had to go into an executive? The other issue that you have to have some nuance, you know, what happens if you had to go into an executive session? I will tell you, in some of, in some of my other, my other clients, there is the meeting which is Zoom participated in, those are usually limited to, say, a workshop or organizational meeting as opposed to the formal meeting. So this is a workshop meeting where people attend remotely. I don't know that your workload necessarily justifies that in existence. And if there is a need for going into closed session, it is to have, you have a second Zoom link. So it's okay, folks, we're going to go into closed session now. We'll be back. You stay here, we click off. Then we click back in, and we're done, we click back in. It sounds cumbersome. After you get used to it, maybe it's not. But there are things like that. We don't have a lot of time when we have to go into executive session. My other concern is that if we were to go into an executive session, I would want to make sure that on the non-physically present individual, that we were sure that that closed session was private to them too. I can't tell you how many times in another sitting when we've gone to an executive session, and I, I'm not being critical of the board members, but you know, kids are running around in the back there. Facing this staff of the listen, and you know, we were talking about in the staff room and the school district. Try to have to monitor, you know, your clients, that's, that's not a good situation. I don't think that would happen with us, but most of the time we've seen this, even in the public session. It's like everybody's separated and apart, so they can focus on the meeting. Those are things that, that should go through the policy, that you can get through if there's a crack in the phone bill. Do those things and then we can tweak that policy. You still got those materials? If anybody still needs them, please let me or Sandy know, just individually, not reply at all. We still need them. We can get them out to you. What went sent out was, I think, I think we had designed in tack and bay, but I don't think they announced anybody saying to it's why. There was a memo addressing legality and then there was a proposed rule in which there were certain things that you guys need to choose this and give me direction, you know, when you found this one, don't you count this? You know, are you going to allow somebody, you know, participating for what reason, how many times a year is there going to be one that is going to be? I just need you, I mean, I just need your direction to put that to that.
So we should put that on the next agenda for the next meeting, depending on how full the agenda is. It doesn't look like it's that full. Well, I will move to adjourn this meeting unless there are other comments. Great. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, guys.